Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Supervisor Brando.
Here.
Supervisor Magzik.
Here.
Supervisor Mendez.
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Here.
Supervisor Quintero.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Good morning, welcome to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, meeting of the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with the invocation and the flag salute. The invocation will be led by District Two, that would be Supervisor Steve Brando. And following the invocation, please remain standing for the flag salute. Supervisor Brando?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In this morning, we're going to have our Senior Chaplain for the Fresno County Sheriff's Department, Janet Grimson, lead us in prayer. Janet has been with the Chaplain's Unit for six years and two as a Senior Chaplain. Chaplains provide many services, from counseling to emergency care, to benedictions, and even weddings. The Sheriff's Chaplains are available at any hour to our deputies, correctional officers, their families, as well as Sheriff's Office staff, and even members of the community. They also assist deputies on the scene, helping comfort victims of crime and crisis. So, at this time, I'd like Chaplain Janet Grimson to come forward. And if you'd all stand, she's going to lead us in prayer, and then we'll go right into the flag salute.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everybody. Join me in prayer. Our Jehovah Father, you are wisdom, you are love. Remember us, oh mighty one. Our hearts are trembled at this petition. Receive our petition. Father, it's you who we look to in uncertain times. Have mercy upon us. Remove our transgression as far as the east is from the west. With every rising sun, enable us to cancel regrets of yesterdays, concern ourselves with our todays, and go forward to attain. Our deepest desire is that our thoughts and our words and our deeds may stand in the scrutiny of the broad day and sound true in every test. Holy Spirit, with us, guide us, that our lives may be as honest in the dark as they are in the light, as good in obscurity as they are publicly, as faithful when alone as when we were in the world when the world is looking on. May we set our affections upon the dateless, spaceless things of your kingdom, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are located on the table at the back of the chamber for anyone wishing to follow along. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, approve agenda, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 10 on your regular calendar has been continued to November 7th, 2023.
Any comments from the board members at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have, first, a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, item numbers 26 through 70. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have some corrections and some continuations. Item 32 on your consent calendar is continued to October 24th, 2023. Items 42 and 45, 42 is under the administrative office. This item concerns a retroactive agreement with Central La Familia Advocacy Services Incorporated. In the department's recommended action, the contractor agency's name is incorrectly spelled, appearing as Central Law Family, and should instead appear as Central La Familia. Item 45 is under Department Behavior Health. This item concerns an amendment to a subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity Fresno Incorporated. In the second recommended action, Habitat for Humanity Incorporated should instead be listed by the subrecipient agency's correct name, Habitat for Humanity Fresno Incorporated. Those are the changes to the consent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. These matters are routine in nature and are usually approved by a single vote. Are there any members of the board that would like an item removed from consent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number 34, please.
Are there any members of the public who would like an item removed for discussion?
Morning, Chairman Quintero, I'd like to pull item number 46.
Thank you, Mr. Tauford. Okay, any other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, items 34 and 46 will be heard after item eight.
Thank you.
So, we now move to item number three. Under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Miko Anderson, District Attorney's Office, 16 years-
Will District Attorney Lisa Smith Camp step forward and make a few comments about Miko L. Anderson? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. I am so honored to be here today to speak about Miko Anderson. Uh, Miko, do you want to come up, please? Miko was born in Oakland, and she attended Laney College and JFK Law School. Stand by me. All right. Miko started in the DA's office on May 7th, 2007, and she did a variety of assignments, from misdemeanor to juvenile DUI grant. She was out in the Kalinga Justice Court for some time. She was on felony trials, and when she sort of earned her chops, I guess you could say, in 2012, she was assigned to the Domestic Violence Unit, where I actually had the opportunity to supervise her and get to know her. In 2013, she served in our gang unit, and in 2014, she came back to the Domestic Violence Unit. And in 2017, she was one of our first human trafficking prosecutors. In 2019, Miko had accomplished so much in the world of human trafficking that she was asked to go to Africa to actually train prosecutors there, which was, you know, such a huge honor for her and also for us, because we were so proud to be able to help her accomplish that. Miko has done numerous trials, sending some of the county's most dangerous criminals to prison for stealing, violating, and profiting off of our children. While doing all of this, Miko raised two children, Charles and Joy, and she is now the proud grandmother of two grandchildren. She also is a founding president of the Black Lawyers Association of Fresno, I'm sorry, of Central California, and she was also a founding member of the Central Valley Unity Bar Association. Miko is the board member and vice president of Breaking the Chains, which you're all familiar with, is a nonprofit here in Fresno that helps rescue victims of human trafficking and really restore them back to their lives. She's also a board member of Tree Fresno, and she is an adjunct professor at the San Joaquin College of Law. For her efforts and accomplishments, Miko has accumulated many awards. First of them was given to her in 2012. She was given a certificate of distinction for being an outstanding prosecutor. In 2017, I had the honor, as the elected, of giving her the Courageous Prosecutor of the Year. In 2018, Breaking the Chains named her the Freedom Fighter of 2018. And in 2023, she was awarded the Suzanne McDaniel Congressional Award, which is awarded to people who have had an impeccable service record, prosecution of crimes, and service to victims. Today, we thank the board for honoring her here today for her 16 years of service to the people of Fresno County. Miko has left her DA family, which makes Lisa Smith Camp very sad, because I love this lady very much. She is not only a trusted colleague, but somebody that I have come to know and love very much personally. She has shared her heart with me many times. We have shared many experiences, from our childhoods, from our experience as prosecutors, raising children, and thankfully, she's the only one at present who is raising grandchildren. So, I will be looking to her down the road, hopefully in another 10 years or so, when I go down that road. Now, Miko has taken on a whole new chapter of her life. She is an attorney advisor, training prosecutors how to investigate and prosecute human traffic cases and other gender-based violent crimes, both domestically and internationally. And if you're on Instagram, check her out, because she's active and she's all over the place. When I have a little bit of extra time and I go on her Instagram page, I'm both sad, because I don't get to see her every day anymore, but so excited and so proud of her for the things that she's doing. She's taking everything that she learned here in the county of Fresno, from the DA's office, from the law enforcement agencies, from the nonprofits, and she's taking that and spreading that wealth of knowledge that she has all over the world. So, today, I thank the board for honoring her, for having us have this time here today so that we can share publicly everything that she has done and how proud we are of her. Miko, I love you and I wish you all the best.
Thanks. I didn't know I would say anything. First, I also want to thank the board for having me and for all my former colleagues who are now just friends, who have always been friends, but now are only my friends, but can call me for anything and anytime they need anything. And tell you that it's been an absolute pleasure to serve the people of Fresno County, and just a reminder that I'm still serving the people of Fresno County, and that I was able to get so much education, insight, passion, knowledge, how to do trials, everything, from our DA's office. It's an experience that cannot be matched by any other situation. So, I'm very grateful to have had it, and again, I just thank everybody.
Ms. Anderson, do you have any family members you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I do have my son in the back, who's trying to not be seen. He doesn't want to at least stand up. There he is in the back. He just waved. That's my son.
He's welcome to come forward.
Come up, girl. And I have some of my very best friends, but there's too many of them to bring up, but that's my son.
If we got to be here, you got to be here.
No, no, no.
Do we have any comments from the board? Okay, Supervisor Brando?
I would just like to say thank you for your service to Fresno County. Very sobering to see all of the great things that you've done for our residents and protecting them in many ways, and we appreciate all the hard work. And best wishes for all those things still in front of you. So, we appreciate your time here.
Thank you.
They listed a lot of your impressive accomplishments and also all your involvement in Fresno County organizations. And somehow, I feel like you should be wearing a red cape or something. And we really appreciate all that you've done and to make Fresno County a better place. And do we have any comments from the public? Okay, see? They don't want to talk about you, huh?
They do not.
They do not? Okay. Yeah, lawyers usually want to talk, but I guess today, we're okay. If you'd please come forward, take a picture with us, and accept your plaque.
DA fam, come on up here. If you're here for Miko, this is your picture time.
Thank you for-
Thanks for sharing, mom.
Gentlemen, good morning.
Gentlewoman?
Good morning.
We now move to item number four, under this Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Brenda Villanueva, Department of Social Services, 28 years of service.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Sanya Bougey, Department of Social Services Director. And I'm here to introduce Elisa Gallegos, who is our program manager, who has worked with Brenda and will recognize her for her 28 years of service in social services.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Supervisors. Today, it is my privilege and my honor to present to you today, Ms. Brenda Villanueva, for 28.58 years of service with the Department of Social Services. Having had previous experience in eligibility work in a previous county, Brenda began her career with the Fresno County Department of Social Services as an eligibility worker two, where she worked in our Rapid Service Unit, providing excellent customer service to some of our most vulnerable populations and low-income families throughout the area. She determined general relief assistant benefits programs for about three years. In 1997, she was promoted to an eligibility worker three, where she served the public administering ongoing Medi-Cal to those in need of critical medical services. In April 2003, Brenda became a lead worker in the Medi-Cal unit. During this time, she helped train and onboard several new workers, and she helped introduce them to the world of eligibility services and providing critical social services to those in need. She participated and volunteered in many work groups and committees that helped better, improve our practices and our business processes. In 2010, Brenda was assigned to the Eves Eligibility and Ongoing Unit, where she reviewed budgets for accuracy. And one of the things that she did was she helped determine benefits and ensure that they were accurately provided to clients in need and that they received what they were eligible to. When asked what she liked most about working with the Department of Social Services, she said to me that it was the established friendships, the coworkers, and the lifelong relationships that she developed throughout her career with her work family. And most importantly, she liked helping people within the community to better themselves. And that is her biggest takeaway from her job. And so, Brenda, throughout your years of service, you have had a tremendous impact on employees and the community of Fresno County. We want to thank you for all of your hard work and dedication and commitment that you have contributed to for your years of service. And thank you, Brenda, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Your turn, Brenda.
I'm not a speaker, sorry.
That's all right.
I do want to thank you for, you know, welcoming me here and for the people that I've worked with. It's been a wonderful experience, and never know, I might come back.
I'm always encouraged to hear that, always. And you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Brenda is also a grandmother of this cute little four-year-old in the back and with another grandchild on the way, but I'm encouraged by the fact that she's, even though she's worked very hard for us for 28 years, she's planning to potentially come back and help us out in need.
Brenda, would you like to introduce your family?
I have my daughter, Christiana, and my youngest grandson, Maverick.
Maverick. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Well, Brenda, thank you very much for all your years of service, and I know we're losing a lot of history, but hopefully, you will come back. You're more than welcome. Okay, Brenda, would you please step forward, accept your retirement plaque, and take a photo with the board, please, you and your family?
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you for your time with us.
No smiling, okay?
We're gonna take a photo.
We now move to item number five, under Chairman Quintero, proclaim October Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October 10th is Pink Day. Chairman, members of the board, I've been informed of an update to this item. The fifth recital paragraph of the proclamation originally includes information regarding the power of the pink ribbon dinner. Due to unforeseen circumstances, that dinner has been canceled. Staff has provided a revised proclamation for presentation this morning, update to omit the fifth recital paragraph, and I will distribute that now.
Will the Sisterhood of Survivors and Human Resources step forward to accept the proclamation? Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow board members. Thank you. I want to give a great thank you for those of you who wore pink today for National Pink Day, October 10th. It's greatly appreciated. For the 31 Days of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, pink ribbons appear as an impact of breast cancer is brought to the forefront of national conversation. But we know that to help those facing breast cancer, awareness alone isn't enough. This October, we're asking people to get involved, get screened, make a donation, and take action. Use your voice, passion, and dollars to help reach every woman and make sure she has access to the screening support and care that she deserves. Not everyone has access to breast care or resources while facing breast cancer. With one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, there has to be a better way. The early detection of breast cancer is often key to successful outcomes. But do you know what to look for or when to see your doctors? This week at our health fair, we will have a breast with lumps so that employees can come by and see what they need to be looking for, as well as receiving education on when to look. With this, I want to introduce Mary Ann Rogazinski from Sisterhood of Survivors.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul. Thank you for having us today to celebrate Breast Awareness Month, Breast Care Awareness Month. I want to introduce you to our board members, which are all here today. We have Janet Ames, who is one of the two women who began Sisterhood of Survivors. She is a two-time breast cancer survivor. Then we have Josie Perez, who is a 12-year survivor. Cindy Jamison, who's a 17-year breast cancer survivor. And Marilyn Ordin, who is a six-year survivor. And I myself am an 18-year survivor. Sisterhood of Survivors began when two women met while going through breast cancer. They were alone until they met, and they vowed to meet again at lunch once their treatments were finished. It was a little over a year before they met again, but when that happened, instead of two, there were now six women. And unfortunately, it kept growing until it became incorporated in 2010. Unfortunately, we are still growing. We deliver these totes to newly diagnosed breast cancer patients. It is filled with a book by Dr. Susan Love called The Breast Book. It has other educational items, personal items for the newly diagnosed that they may use along their journey, and it is a journey. And only a breast cancer survivor delivers one of these bags to the women. We also facilitate a monthly luncheon. The monthly luncheons are on the third, sorry, the third weekend of each month on a Saturday. Our next one is October 21st, and it'll be at Marie Callender's at the corner of Cedar and Chestnut, I'm sorry, Cedar and Shaw, and it's at 12:00 noon. We also participate in community events. For instance, last month, we participated in the Central California Women's Conference. And this Thursday, day after tomorrow, we will be at the county health fair to present information to county employees and retirees who also attend those. We are very excited about engaging with your staff. And next week, we will also be partnering with C Care of St. Agnes, where we'll be attending their health fair. I think it's next Tuesday. Thank you, and again, we want to thank you for acknowledging our organization and acknowledging this month, it's very important that women get checked, get their annual mammograms, and get early detection, because it could save your life. Thank you.
Are there any comments from the board? Supervisor Magzik?
So, this is very timely for us here in Fresno County. We have one of our own right now, Deputy Clapper, who is battling breast cancer, and she just found out about the severity of her diagnosis, I believe, the end of September. And so, she publicly shared her story. I know that Channel 30 carried some of that information on Friday of last week. But I, you know, I think about breast cancer. My grandmother, on my mom's side, struggled with breast cancer, and members of my family right now are struggling with breast cancer as well. So, I appreciate you, your willingness, Mary Ann, to come forward to share your story and also talk about the fact that there is hope, there are opportunities to share as women and men as well are going through and facing breast cancer, and really appreciate just the strength that you bring into this chamber and the message that you share with people who need it the most when they're going through their challenges. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for the work that you do out in the community and supporting the survivors. And there's a quote in here in the proclamation that I believe somewhat summarizes the mission statement for the organization, which says, "Sisterhood of Survivors assists newly diagnosed breast cancer patients and their families and offer ongoing support to those affected by breast cancer through peer support and educational resources." And to me, that says it all in terms of the outreach you do in the community, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. We truly carry that with each other every day.
Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none? Oh, sure. You're next, Cruz. Yeah?
My name is Cruz Coyar, and my wife is a 28-year cancer survivor.
With that, I would like to make a motion to proclaim October Breast Cancer Awareness Month and October 10th, today as Pink Day. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Supervisor Magzik. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Please come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always, yeah, like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Paul, will you and Cruz please step forward? Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Would either one of you like to briefly speak about the Veterans' Day Parade, the 104th?
Yes, sir. We've been having the parade for 104 years. And I've been volunteering in the parade for more than 12 years. We want to continue to have that parade to honor our veterans. I served in the U.S. Army, and I'm a proud Vietnam veteran.
Would you like to introduce your fellow veterans, Cruz?
Yes, we have Gabe Villasenor, Harry Paul, and Paul Harros. And Paul Harros is our coordinator.
Thank you. Did you want to make some comments as well, either, any of you?
Members of the board, we wanted to say thank you for having us up here and putting us on your agenda. Just as the board president, Cruz, stated, you know, being a veteran, and we're all volunteers. We come back home, we volunteer to our community and stuff in the parade, which reflects the community's involvement and their support for the veterans. Just like Harry Paul from the Korean era, retired Command Sergeant Major Gabe Villasenor, who served in operations Desert Storm in Iraq. I myself am a veteran of the Army, served in Desert Storm and served in Iraq, and currently have two children serving in the military. The parade is a reflection of the community that supports our veterans. Although our veterans are the highlight of the parade, but it's nothing more than the pride, the support from the community that we do it. And that's why I believe that as a veteran or an individual that serves at any capacity does something, because they believe in their community, they believe in their government, they believe who they are. And as an American, that's what we believe, and that's why we did what we did. But to come home and to have the parade continuously going on for a century reflects the Central Valley, our way of life, and something that we wish to continue to do for generations to come. And again, members of the board, thank you for having us, for everybody to come over here and see us, and on November 11th, to come out to the Central Valley Veterans' Day Parade and witness a magnificent event. This year, our grand marshal is an individual of such, you know, he's an individual that joined the United States Marine Corps in Iraq. He's since come home, and he continues to serve as a member of the law enforcement. He's a sergeant with the Fresno Police Department. And during his time in Iraq, he's a recipient of the Navy Cross. And this year, we want to reflect our continued service for, his name is Jarrett Kraft, for Jarrett to enlist into the military and then come home and continue to serve. And that's what we believe that the veteran community continues to do, is to continue to serve. So, we're proud of that, and we're proud to be members of this Central Valley. And thank you again.
Paul, which branch of the military will be highlighted this year? I know each year.
This year's service, the United States Marine Corps. And that's why our selection reflected the branch of service.
Did any other members of your group have any comments?
Just a quick note that I do want to appreciate what you guys are doing today. And by honoring this parade, you honor veterans of this great county. I can tell you, just in the title, the 104th. Since 1919, we've been having this parade here. And by your honoring us today and this group of people who volunteer, you're honoring every single veteran, past, peasant, and future. And I just want to thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. Cruz, I've known you for many years, but I didn't recognize you today because you're usually wearing your baseball hat. So, still look good. With that, I would like to adopt the resolution to commemorate the 104th Central Valley Veterans' Day Parade. And with that, consider that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Supervisor Magzig. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your service and the veterans that will be honored at the parade. We deeply appreciate your service. Please come forward and accept your proclamation. I think you deserve a standing ovation.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Cruz, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Magzic.
Absolutely.
You should have told me when you were a deputy. You're working with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number eight, clerk.
We now move to item number seven. Under Supervisor Brandow, adopt a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Pavarello House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let the aisles clear a little bit. Well, it's not quite 104 years like the Veterans' Parade. But today, I want to recognize, and we want to recognize from the Board of Supervisors, the Pavarillo House, who's been part of our community for 50 years. They're celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. In 1973, Mike and Mary McGarvin started passing out peanut butter and jelly sandwiches to homeless folks in our community. And that ministry of love continued to grow and has now reached 50 years. So, I've asked Zach Dara, he's the CEO of the Pavarillo House, and I don't know if you were bringing one of, is bringing one of your board members, but this is Mary. And we wanted you to come up here and chat with us a little bit about all of the things that you've accomplished over the years. We know that you're a great partner, both for Fresno County and the city of Fresno, and received a lot of support just earlier this year. Actually, towards the end of last year and this year, we took votes to help with the addition of a brand-new kitchen for Pavarillo House that's going to be able to extend all of the services you do. You now serve 365 days a year and three hot meals a day for every single day of the year. You have Naomi's House for Homeless Women, free medical dental care, showers now, laundry and rehab services, as well as being the overall hub for MapPoint, where so many across our community get connected to the services that are available to them. But Zach, I wish you would share a few things with us about your 50th anniversary.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Brandow. Thank you to the other members of the board. Thank you to Paul and your team for all our work together for the kitchen, which I saw today passed on consent to finalize the $2.5 million. So, thank all of you for that. But yes, what a powerful story of an organization here in Fresno, starting with Mike, who would be lovingly known as Papa Mike to many over the years. And of course, we call this young lady Mama Mary down at Pavarillo House all those years ago. People do a lot of random acts of kindness, serving people in need. In fact, maybe even some of you have given a bottle of water to somebody on the street or some food or whatnot, maybe even a couple bucks, whatever that might be. But Papa Mike's journey started with that vision, just to love and to help people, and it resonated with the hearts of so many. And here we are now, 50 years later, continuing what he started all those years ago through peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, doing over a million meals a year, shelter services, street outreach services. Of course, Naomi's House, the county of Fresno, is the supporter of that work, as well as MapPoint and many other. Today, we have a team of about 175 folks that all started from one, Papa Mike. And we're just thrilled to be able to celebrate this year, 50 years. A lot has gone into this year, of course. We unveiled a memorial on our campus this year of Papa Mike. And there was nothing on the campus with his name on it. And so, we have a beautiful stained glass mosaic and fountain that's in our courtyard area so that no one will ever forget about the great work that he did in this community and the legacy that will continue on for decades and decades into the future. So, we're just grateful for this community that has supported this work for 50 years. There is no Pavarillo House without the good people of this community giving their time, their talents, and their treasures to see people feel their dignity and worth and to serve, no matter who it is, and enriching the lives and spirits of all who pass our way down at Pavarillo House. So, thank you guys so much for recognizing this momentous occasion. And we're going to continue to be committed to this work for decades into the future as well. I would love to hear some words from Mama Mary, if that would be all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, members. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to the community of Fresno because we wouldn't be here without support of the city, the county, and the community. And I'd just like to say, I can't believe it's been 50 years. So, I hope we can continue. And I do appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Are there any comments from the board? Just a brief comment on my part. It just seems that the Pavarillo keeps getting built by folks that care in our community, piece by piece. And over 50 years, you keep seeing a new piece added on. And I'm really looking forward to the kitchen being opened. We took a tour when we dedicated Papa Mike's memorial there. And one thing I'm really excited about, as you pointed out, Zach, is that you're having more and more families show up for assistance. And the thing that you pointed out about the kitchen itself is, just to give those families a sense of dignity, part of the plan for the dining area is going to be like a diner, just like if they were going to any diner in town to get served. And I think that's really a tribute to being responsive to the community and helping out those families, to give them that sense of dignity. So, I want to thank you for that. Each step, and Mama Mary, we go way back when we had dark hair. So, anyway, thank you for all you do, you've done in the family. Supervisor, you need to make a motion?
I certainly will. You know, I was really happy, Mama Mary, that you came out and joined us today. It really makes this celebration extra special to hear from you and to have you here. But Zach, we appreciate all the hard work that continues, you know. Homelessness, there's a lot of opinions about homelessness. But at the end of the day, a lot of people, like, have volunteered at the Pavarillo House to love on other people that are in a tough time in their life. So, we do appreciate that. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution to recognize the 50-year anniversary of the Pavarillo House.
And I got lost in the moment. Is there any comment from the public?
Please step forward to the podium.
My nephew went through the rehab at the Pavarillo, and now he works for you. He's Rick. He does intake there now. So, so grateful to you guys.
Any other comments from the public? Yes. Step forward.
You know, back in 2015, I was homeless, no place to go. Went to the Pavarillo House, and I got involved in there. And from the Pavarillo House, that led me to the MAP program, that led me to the Housing Authority, that led me to my own home. And through passing inspections and doing the things I needed to do, that led me to Section 8. And now, that helped lead me to a job as an in-home support service care provider. And it pretty much all started with the Pavarillo House.
Fantastic.
Hi, I'm Olga Baye, and I want to say thank you for all the work you do as a teacher. We saw, I saw this, children being served, families being served. And, you know, there's one incident that the father had come for the children, and it was in the school setting. And I had to beg the father to wait so that the children could stay and eat before they left, or at least get their lunches, because I knew that the situation was that they were homeless. I thank you from the bottom of my heart because also, a lot of our would-be clients for IHSS, I'm not, well, I'm not a lawyer, right? But I also work for IHSS. And I know that a lot of them have not been identified and gotten services. And a lot of the people who are homeless, many need the service. So, I thank you. I've gone to volunteer sometimes, and also my children and their classes from the Fresno High School have gone. And so, it's an eye-opening experience. And the thing is, we are, we never know. Some people think that they have very good jobs and are very, you know, they're settled in, and they think that they have it made. And we see that people who have a lot of money have careers and such, and they end up homeless. And thank God that the Pavarillo House is there for us, you know? Thank you. Thank you. And thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Mendez. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Motion passes. Please come forward.
Item eight, proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fresno County.
And here with us today is Nicole Linder, the Executive Director of the Marjorie Mason Center. And I think there might be a few board members that you have as well in the chamber. And the Marjorie Mason Center has been doing incredible work in Fresno County. If my memory serves me correctly, there were last year about 11,000 domestic violence calls, which is a shocking number to hear. And when you think about the roughly
Item eight, proclaim October twenty twenty-three as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fresno County.
And here with us today is Nicole Linder, the Executive Director of the Marjory Mason Center. And I think there might be a few board members that you have as well in the chamber. And the Marjory Mason Center has been doing incredible work in Fresno County. If my memory serves me correctly, there were last year about eleven thousand domestic violence calls, which is a shocking number to hear. And when you think about the roughly seventy-five hundred individuals, adults and children, that the Marjory Mason Center has been able to help in the last year, you recognize that domestic violence is something that is a very large problem, and it's something a lot of people don't want to talk about. So this proclamation that I have today is, the whole purpose is to bring awareness to this. And Nicole, if you can share with us a little bit about your organization, that would be fantastic.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much to the entire Board of Supervisors in the county for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's not lost on me that I get to publicly carry somebody else's name each and every day. And so I'm really pleased to be joined here by Marjory Mason's much younger brother, Alfred Mason, who's here with his wife, Rosine. So I'd like to introduce him first.
Hello, Councilwoman Marzah, how are you? Yeah, I'm Alfred Mason, Marjory Mason's younger brother. I'm also a retired police officer that had to respond to domestic violence continuously throughout my career. The greatest thing about the Marjory Mason Center is they don't only help an individual, they help the whole family to be successful in continuing a successful life. They don't just stop, they keep going. They, as a police officer many years ago, we would make arrests, we'd turn around and put the children in a shelter, children's shelter, we'd take the parents to jail. And there was no agency that we could refer to to try to mesh that back together. The Marjory Mason Center does that exactly. They don't just help the male or the female, they help the family to be successful. So I want to thank you all for supporting the Marjory Mason Center for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mason family. There's a bunch of you behind you. Come on up. Come on up. There's room on both sides. So it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have lots of activities going on this month. We obviously have our Top Ten Professional Women and Leading Business Awards next week. I hope you'll all join us. One of our honorees this year is City Manager of Reedley, Nicole Zeba, so we're excited to recognize her. Purple Thursday is next Thursday, the nineteenth, so we encourage you to wear purple and raise awareness on through your social media platforms. The City of Reedley will be holding a prayer vigil at ten o'clock, where they'll shut down the main roads in Reedley, and hold twenty-four minutes of prayer, specifically in the city with city leaders. This last, well, about a month and a half ago, in partnership with all of Fresno County law enforcement, we launched a domestic violence data dashboard. It is on our website. And that was a, that was a, that was a project that took almost two years with all of, all of the local law enforcement, because the City of Fresno, the City of Clovis, and the County of Fresno have three separate databases. And so they've all committed to collecting the same data and exporting it to the Marjory Mason Center, so we could provide better data. So you'll see on our website, the city's work halls are coming from the county, the zip codes, the gender. And the reality is, we're not dealing with an older person, married couple issue anymore. And so most important to us is our work with youth, and talking about healthy relationships. And we do that in the schools, thanks in partnership with the schools and the Department of Public Health. So there's a lot of people here. I do want to say, we're a nonprofit organization, but we have dotted lines to many of your county leaders who are here with us today. So I did want to acknowledge them. Two of my board members, Sheriff John Zenoni, and District Attorney Lisa Smitcamp. Chief Haynes is here, probation, with Karen Roach and her team from CVAC. Dave Lukini with Public Health, Sonya Bougaye with DSS, and Susan Holt with DBH. And I can't see, is there somebody else behind me? Nope. Did I get everyone? Oh, that's so awesome. And then I also definitely, we, with DSS and the Fresno Madera Continuum Care, recently contracted due to Fresno County Domestic Violence Homeless Reduction Plan, and that'll be released in the near future. Last but not least, as you know, this board committed four point seven million dollars to help us build a new campus. We have been using a building that was built in nineteen thirteen, and I am excited to say the project's on track. We've selected a general contractor, and we anticipate moving in next December. So we will keep you updated on that. So thank you so much. I want to open this up, two years ago, two years ago this weekend, it was a third of a string of domestic violence homicides in our community. And all of the local law enforcement leaders from each city throughout the county came together for a press conference to say, we want you to know, we are here for you. This has to stop. Law enforcement is here to keep you safe. There are organizations, such as the Marjory Mason Center, to keep you safe. And we held a press conference, and a brave woman who had just lost her daughter came forward to speak at that. It wasn't until this woman came up that I recognized her as my high school counselor from several decades ago. Anna Richards was shot in the driveway of her family home, with her son and her parents there. Her brave mother is here today to say a few words about her experience. Eleanor?
I have to make one, first of all, thank you very much. My name is Eleanor. I am the proud mother of Anna. I am not brave. That part is a little disingenuous, so I need to make the correction for the record. What I have learned is, first of all, Marjory Mason did save our entire family. Because my daughter had taken advantage of the safety group, she taught her son a safe word. She did not anticipate her death, but she knew that she was a target. What we didn't know is that he had put a tracker on her car, and had followed her. He'd already made one attempt by attacking our house, and trying to kill my husband. So we knew the violence was there, and there was this restraining order, and she had done all that she could. But that particular night, he again attacked, she said the safe word, and because Elliot, who was eight at the time, heard the word, he took action and left the car. Because he left the car, that, you know, destroyed his plan to kill all of us. And so as a result, he left, because there were now people in the street, he could hear the sirens, and he knew that the game was over. I always say, two souls died that night. That's not always a popular or accepted version in my family. I seem to walk that road alone. But we have to understand, too, the result of that action was not just the death of my daughter, who was a joyful, wonderful teacher, whose students still miss her. I can walk onto that campus, and the little kids will run up and say, Anna's mom, you're Anna's mom. And I say, yeah, she's on special assignment. And so we have to keep her vision alive, which was to be kind, to help others. And as I'm listening to the other speakers, I realized she was running in the Coman race, she would volunteer at Pavarello, she would volunteer wherever she could. And I was amazed by how many people, not just locally, but around the world, had met her and were touched by her, including an artist in Ukraine, who sent a glass hummingbird to our home. It was the last piece of artwork he'd made prior to the invasion of Ukraine. And we memorialize that, along with all that she did. But one important thing that she would say is, be careful of the little kids, because they see the trauma, they feel the trauma, and that trauma then becomes part of our community. And somebody has to take care of that. And so that is part of what we do. We do the Anna Bags, my, her son and I collect plastic bottles, and then using that money, we buy toiletries, and we create the Anna Bags that we take to Marjory Mason. There's also a scholarship in her name, because she believed strongly in early education. She thought preschool was the best way to get kids' attention, get them motivated to learn and to go on. And so we award a scholarship in her name every year. She also said, please be kind. That was her message. I thank you for your time. I thank you for listening. This isn't a popular topic, is it? But it is one that unfortunately, we have to share. But our family thanks you.
So thank you so very much. You have a lot of your county leaders here, so I'm gonna open it if anybody else has anything they want to say.
Any comments from the public?
Sorry, my name is Olga Baye, and I want to thank you so much for saving my friends. I have personally survived domestic violence, but also, I thank you, like I said, for my friends, for Vida, for Nena, for Kathy, for so many more that I have referred. Some have lived in your shelters and received services. It takes a lot, it takes a lot to stay in a relationship like that. We say for love. And personally, sitting in front of a gun, being pointed at me, and then at himself, you know, it is, it takes a lot, getting up, you know, and discussing it with my, or hearing my children discuss it. One of them tells me, I should have stayed with the father, the father. And the other one says, how could you want mom to stay in there, when you yourself say that, you know, your dad would beat her? And she would get up off the floor, put her makeup on, and go to work. She would put on her makeup to cover the scars, the bruises. And so, and I apologize, I thought, I tried to turn it up. But thank you, thank you so much for your services. Thank you for all the survivors. I can't even mention how many. I did a report at City College when I went back to school, and it said that we die at the hands of our loved ones, more than anything else, because who else is close enough to you? But I thank you, thank you, and thank the board for doing this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue. I am also a survivor of abuse. And I worked for the Marjory Mason Center when it first started quite a few years ago, just for a temporary time, because I ended up getting a job at the IRS. But I just have to say that I've watched them grow, and I just want to thank everybody, and thank you, thank God for all of you. Without this Marjory Mason Center, there would be so much more terrible situations happen. And I see that they have a new building that they're building over on Bullard, and I'm just so excited every day I pass by it, because of where I work. And I just want to tell you all thank you, and God bless you all for your service.
Other comments from the public? Board?
I'll move for approval.
We have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Thank you, and please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, we now take up the consent items that were pulled.
Consent, you're right.
The first item pulled by Sue Riser-Brandt under item thirty-four, County Clerk Registers of Voters, approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement with Integrated Voting Systems.
Item thirty-four?
Mr. Chairman, and the reason I pulled this item is I just want to register a no vote. And so I don't know if you want to go through a presentation or not, but that's basically the reason I wanted to pull that item.
Does any of the board require a presentation? Okay, seeing none. Is there any comments from the public regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, it's just kind of a busy room today.
You gotta stay awake, brother.
I was, I was moving, I'm in the corner. It's even crazier out there today. I'm lucky to even be in here right now. All right.
My name is Sean Burdine, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic today. If you hadn't pulled the item today, Supervisor Brandtow, I would have liked to have done so as well. So thank you very much for doing that. I do have concerns regarding this particular vendor. Integrated Voting Systems was what we adopted in Fresno County by the Board of Supervisors in March of twenty eighteen, with approved a retroactive agreement that transferred its existing contract with Integrated Voting Solutions to Integrated Voting Systems for ballot printing and mailing services. The new business, Integrated Voting Systems, shares a working name, address, and other details with a different business, the original contract, Integrated Voting Solutions. And for nearly two years, Integrated Voting Systems conducted business as Integrated Voting Solutions. Now, it gets kind of even messier from here, because Integrated Voting Solutions was barred from doing business in the state of California, and had a federal tax lien of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Both companies list agents with the same last name, the same address in state documents, both appear to be operating as interchangeable vendors, and both have run afoul of the Federal Internal Revenue Service, which has put them in the hot water. Gets even messier from here, too. In June of twenty eighteen, the company caused a critical ballot error that required a recount in a Colorado county, leading to news stories that linked the company to the one where it was previously discussed. In Monroes, Colorado, in June, a printing mistake by Integrated Voting Solutions led to a manual recount of more than ten thousand ballots. The company contracted with Monroes County was Integrated Voting Systems, using the name Integrated Voting Solutions. A spokeswoman for the vendor's Denver office took full responsibility for the printing mistake, saying it was human error on the part of the company. So I have deep concerns surrounding, you know, the vote-by-mail system as a whole, and I'd love to go on and on about that as a greater, you know, topic. But I recognize today is specifically on this item. And in regards to this particular agenda item, I would strongly urge the board to look further into this one, and vote nay on it today, until you can do some greater research, make sure everything is completely above board. And also, I would strongly encourage the board to look at alternatives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tammy Richardson, and I live in Supervisor Poteco's district. And I would just like to urge the board to use caution on who they choose to contract with for a multiple-year, multiple millions of dollars for our mail-out ballots. As far as I know, we still have poll chief on our, as a part of As far as I know, we still have poll chief on our, as a part of our employee, election employee system. And poll chief ended up being a Chinese company that houses all of our employee Fresno County election employees' information. So, it's very important for the safety of all of our information on our ballots that you vet it and you make sure that whatever company you choose is for the safety of the citizens of Fresno County. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brent Berdine. As businessmen, even as balancing your own home budget, we all have to go on with the process, carry on with the process of reconciliation. This voting system, the company, has not provided sufficient reconciliation of all the ballots that they have created, that they have mailed out, nor have balanced out what has been returned, destroyed, or been voted upon. Until such time where it meets satisfaction or adequacy, we need to be careful about approving, going with this company. This company, you're handing over information for the voter rolls to this company. Every ballot they create is already a vote. All somebody has to do is simply fill it out and provide a signature, a signature verification that doesn't even meet the minimum required to be in any California court. So, we have to be very careful. And also, looking over the contract, I found it was inadequate, the county's oversight and supervision of this contract. It did say upon request that the county could inspect data and the premises and what have you. But beyond that, there was no direct oversight. This is county property. This is the county responsibility. And I think you should have a direct role and direct involvement in the oversight to safeguard the data and also safeguarding the number and ballots that are being created. And in each ballot that is created and is mailed out, it'd be, the accurate data be tracked. We can't have, oh, 300,000 to 500,000 ballots being printed. We don't know. We receive so many ballots that come in, and how many ballots were mailed out by the county or by the state, by different offices? Again, there hasn't been an adequate reconciliation, nor do I believe there's sufficient county oversight of this contract in vetting of this company. So, I would urge a no vote at this point. Thank you very much.
Hi, I will be brief. My name is Cindy Fukuyama. I'm in Steve Brandow's district. And I just want to concur with the people that spoke. I am concerned with the passage of AB 969, which was signed into law by Newsom. Each county is getting less and less authority over their elections, and that has to do with the ability to do hand counting. I just really strongly urge you to look at this contract because the history of this organization is quite revealing, and it is a lot of money for multiple years. Thank you.
Chairman, I don't know if I'm going out of order or not. This is my first time being in a crowd. But I would like for you to recognize us here as in-home workers as well as the other
That'll be a little bit later on the agenda.
Can you please tell me when? Tell me when I can stand? Can you just flag me? Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Is there any other comments from the public regarding item number 34? Seeing that, I will entertain a motion in a second.
Wait a minute. Yeah, there's several.
Yeah, wait a minute. I think James got to come up and answer those questions. Yeah. Go ahead, James.
Before James dives into that, so we did an RFP, as I understood it. There were seven vendors that responded. It was whittled down to three.
So, we had three vendors respond to this RFP.
But it was mailed out to seven different vendors.
It was mailed out to seven because this is a process that must be, you must be certified by the state of California. So, there's only a limited number of vendors across the country that have qualified as a certified vendor in California and received three responses to our RFP.
And there was a panel that was put together. Can you talk a little bit about this panel that vetted the three vendors?
So, the panel was a combination of staff from my department that work with the ballot and mail processes, so both the ballot printing and VVM mailing process, as well as our registration and other associated mailing requirements that we require to do by law, and members of the Internal Services Department were part of that, all done underneath the supervision of the Purchasing Department. So, they have led and made sure that we did a full discussion, review of all of the respondents.
And again, with this company that responded, IVS, it was brought up that maybe they had some issues with the IRS in the past or maybe a subsidiary of theirs. So, I assume this was, any kind of contract, this was vetted also through our county council's office. They looked at it because clearly I wouldn't want to be doing business with an entity that is precluded from doing business in the state of California or is not certified. But I'm hearing you say they are certified. County Council, can you comment on?
Yeah, this company is authorized to do business in California.
They cannot be certified without having those, being in a clean state for those financial and licensure requirements.
Okay.
I got a few more then. So, we had three responsive bidders then. So, we do have alternatives.
We do.
We do. What was the significance of this one over the second or third place vendors?
So, this vendor was the lowest-cost vendor, not by that significant a margin, but they were the lowest cost. They are the closest to Fresno, having a printing facility in Dinuba. And that does play a role and was a part of our RFP, distance from the county to be able to provide materials. A second vendor is in the Central Valley but further away. They have worked with us for over 20 years. And while that's not explicitly part of the RFP, their prior knowledge of us was. And so, they have worked with us, and they were able to provide a secure transfer system, elucidate to that transfer so that information security is there, and agreed to additional during the negotiation phase to actually improve and strengthen their cybersecurity processes.
Yeah, because that was definitely a concern of some of the public that came forward, the amount of ballots, and then no reconciliation of how many were printed, how many are mailed, and all that. Knowing you, James, I would think you oversee that and you account for that?
So, when we give a file, a voter file for mailing, if we give a file for any of our mailings, there is a draft, we see what the mailing is going to be in hard copy before it goes out, as well as a full count. This is the number of items that will be printed, and these are the number of items that we requested. So, we do that matchup so that we know that they're using the same information that we have provided them. They're not printing more. Sometimes it's part of the, the, our fee here was actually making sure they have sufficient processes in place because two years ago, we had issues with paper quantities and ordering ahead to make sure we had sufficient paper. This is not a situation where they're printing extra items. This is a print-on-demand, we provide 100,000.
And then hopefully, you have a system check in place because there are sometimes multiple ballots, or a person gets a ballot, and then they go to the voting station, and then they vote there.
Correct. Those are separate systems.
Feel pretty confident that, yeah, you, even though there would be multiple ballots, you still only will, will count one.
Yes, sir.
The other issue, now that we're all discussing this on the front end, I don't know if it was a significant issue in Fresno, but I know we had some issues with the envelopes themselves, that you could see how people had voted on a particular item through the window or whatever. Hopefully, in this round of voting, that we have eliminated the window per se, or so that you can't see inside for the ballot, or have we addressed that issue from the past?
So, we actually, so complaints about that came up during the 2021 recall election, specifically, notably in Los Angeles County, because there were two holes next to their signature space. Those are called signature guides, and they're actually in best practice for ADA purposes. It allows someone who has visual difficulties to know where you're supposed to sign the envelope or important document. Having seen those concerns expressed and having received from our local ADA advocates requests, demands to begin implementing the signature guide locally, we took both of those into account and working with IVS, they've been a partner and they worked with us, we actually designed an envelope where we incorporate signature guides that are then hidden.
Perfect.
So that you cannot see into our envelope.
Again, James, I have the utmost confidence in you and your office and do believe in Fresno County that we have fair elections and to the best of our ability, make sure people vote and only vote one time. Given the concerns that we have had over the years, I realize that you, by mandate, are supposed to pick the lowest bidder. I believe they're probably can do the job, but maybe this is an instant, and I believe County Council, the board has a discretion that maybe we can go, for he said not a significant cost, that maybe we can go to vendor number two and maybe ease some of those concerns. Is that within our authority?
The board would be able to do that in this. The RFP process for service contracts doesn't require that the board take the lowest bidder. There are a number of factors in the RFP in addition to price. The board finds some of those factors to be more compelling.
Right.
Than the others.
So, again, I'm confident through our vetting process, this company can perform the job. I do like the local aspect of it. But you know, James, they kind of got a little shaky past, and maybe this is the time we should pay a little bit more money and go to vendor number two.
One thing I'll note, and again, this was not part of the RFP because the RFP focuses on the RFP and what information is provided at that time. But we're at a point here that I think it's, as I mentioned, we have worked with IVS for quite a long time. And that issue that was brought up in 2018 in Colorado was not the local, it was the company as a whole, but it was not our local processing group. And the local processing group has not had an error or other problem and have corrected ours in the time, in this last five years. They have been good partners, and they have done the work when we have asked them to do it at the last moment.
All right. Well, I can understand that, but sometimes you're guilty by association. If you're part of the whole, then you got to kind of live and die with that, too. But I'm willing to accept the will of the majority here on the board. I don't know what my colleagues are thinking, but it's up to, up to whatever we want to do. You good? Yeah. All right.
Comments?
I'm done.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve this item.
James, is bidder number two, the second bidder, are they prepared to move forward? And can they meet the demands of your office?
While I expect that they can meet the demands of my office, we are now currently conducting an election and are actively beginning processes for the March 2024 election.
There you go.
And that may be an unfair ask of the, any vendor for us to go and begin contract negotiations now. They probably can, but then to transfer all of our information will be a challenge.
So, they got you by the short hairs, Maxie?
Well, not necessarily. We can just, you know.
I mean, you got till March. Come on.
Let's see if one of you smart guys can make a motion then.
Supervisor Brandow, you raised the question.
I'll make a motion that we deny item number 34. Don't approve it at this time.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay, do we have? Okay, let's vote on that one.
Yeah, we vote to deny. Yeah.
Vote to deny. Okay.
At this time.
At this time. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no. Most.
The motion carried?
Motion carried.
Come back next meeting, James, with vendor number two.
So, motion carries four with one supervisor voting no. We now move to item number 46, which was pulled by a member of the public under Human Resources, approve the county health premium contribution for plan year 2024.
You got good news for us, Riley?
Item 46. Mr. Talford?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Quintero. My name is Riley Talford. I'm the chapter president of Fresno County SEIU Local 521. Anyway, first, I'd like to thank the board, CEO Paul Nerlin, Director Hollis McGill, in addressing healthcare costs for employees. For years, many employees have been unable to afford children, spouse, or family healthcare. The increased contribution recommended for approval today addresses this issue and will greatly aid keeping employees and their families with the county long term. Furthermore, plan offerings that will allow a return for zero payroll contributions for employees will allow them to see a greater return from their earned salaries. As I thank you and acknowledge your efforts in reinvesting in the county's workforce, I urge you to please continue the investment and let employees know that you truly care in what they do and wish for them to continue their career growth in Fresno County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talford. Next?
Yes, thank you, board. This is a very generous and huge step for our health insurance contribution. I'm just here to answer any questions. Gilbert De La Torre, who did the negotiations, and Davana, your benefits manager. So, thank you very much. Just here to answer any questions.
Any questions? Comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Additional? Okay. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the item.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all our consent items that were pulled from this morning. We return to your regular agenda. Item number nine, under the Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator Retroactively Approve and Authorize the Chairman to Execute Agreement with Riverdale Joint Unified School District Effective August 10, 2023, for five consecutive years, which includes an approximately three-year and two-month base contract and two optional one-year extensions total not to exceed $1,728,542.
Good morning. I'm Matt Alexander. I'm the captain in charge of the Patrol Bureau, and I'm just here to answer any questions on this item.
Are there any comments from the board? Okay, any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will entertain a, okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10.
As mentioned this morning, item 10 was continued to November 7. We now move to item number 11, Accept the Annual Fresno County Crop and Livestock Report for 2022 from the Department of Agriculture.
Okay, Ms. Cregan.
Right. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Melissa Cregan, Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. It is my pleasure to present the 2022 Fresno County Agricultural Crop and Livestock Report. This report summarizes the acreage production and value of agricultural commodities produced in Fresno County. The 2022 total gross production value is 0.12% higher than the 2021 total for a new record value of $8,955,546,000. For the first time since 2022... For the first time since 2012, grapes held the top spot with a total gross value of $1.241 billion. Almonds dropped to the second top gross value at $1.141 billion and pistachios remained third with a gross value of $705 million. The remainder of the top 10 saw some shuffling of positions with mandarins displacing oranges to reclaim a spot in the top 10. Fresno County's agricultural strength is based upon the diversity of crops produced. Included in the 2022 report are over 183 different commodities, 77 of which have a gross value in excess of $1 million. Fresno County continues to supply the highest quality of food and fiber nationwide and abroad, exporting 89 unique commodities to more than 90 countries around the world. The top five export destinations were Canada, Mexico, Japan, Taiwan, and the Republic of Korea. It is important to note the figures provided in this report reflect gross values and do not take into account the cost of production, marketing, transportation, or any other costs. These figures do not represent net profit or loss to the producers of these commodities. At this time, I would like to introduce Ryan Jacobson, Executive Director of the Fresno County Farm Bureau, and invite him to say a few words.
Good morning, Chair Quintero, supervisors, and county staff. I'm excited to be here on behalf of the Fresno County Farm Bureau to talk about our 2022 crop report. As you all know, it once again showcases why Fresno County is the agricultural capital of the nation and the world. Obviously, the productivity we have here is found in very few other places, and this is a time for us to celebrate all that we do have in our backyard. Now, again, this is for last year, so 2022, as we reflect upon and look what last year had, there are a couple notable things that's worth talking about. It was a third year of drought here in the valley. It was following that very painful 2021, which is arguably one of the worst years we've had on record. The bounty of this year is easy, they can easily make you forget what happened last year, but farmers did struggle once again. It was a zero-person allocation on the west side, as well as the first starts of sigma for several irrigation districts that started to see surface and the groundwater cutbacks combined together that affected their water supply. 2022 will also be remembered for the many extraordinarily increases in our input costs, such as energy, crop protection tools, machinery, and so much more. Farmers and ranchers are price takers, not price makers, therefore, they don't pass on those prices in that global agricultural economy that we play in. So it's important to remember that, as Melissa just mentioned here just a second ago, that this is the gross income for the valley, not the net side, because obviously, a lot of farmers did struggle last year simply because we did see those input costs that went up so incredibly quickly. I also want to go on to talk about the crop report. We talk about the numbers, but it's also important to talk about the people. It provides the opportunity to salute the local agriculture and focus on the food and fiber jobs, the economic benefits, as well as everything else that our farms here locally provide. No matter how big or how small the farm is, they all contribute to this report. And obviously, we have two county supervisors that help to contribute to this report as well. As I end my comments, I want to give a big thank you to really recognize our partnership, when I say "our," the agricultural communities partnership with the County of Fresno. Obviously, you supervisors play a major role in what goes on out there. As more and more is what we feel an attack on the industry and an attack on what goes on for this amazing agricultural region that we have, you guys really do play a critical role in making sure that we find the balance and we find a way for agriculture to succeed and thrive here in the valley. But I also want to recognize and talk about the important people out in the fields, those folks that bring in our harvest every day. They do a remarkable job. We can't do it without them. Obviously, their skilled hands, their skilled minds are what allows this desert to bloom. And so I really want to give a shout out to them. And then lastly, I want to talk about the county departments. Obviously, Melissa and her staff did an incredible job of pulling this together. This is not easy. This is a ton of work to pull together. Our farmers and ranchers obviously are contributors of the information for them to be able to pull this together, but there is a lot of work that goes into this, so a big shout out to our staff. But I also want to give a shout out to those departments that you don't traditionally think of, you know, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Public Works and Planning, the Sheriff's Department, the DA, the CAO's office, and so many more play a critical role in what our ag industry does here. And so I really want to thank those folks. There's hundreds of them that really do something day in, day out, that contributes to our local agriculture industry here, and I want to give a big appreciation for them for all they do. So with that, thank you so much for having us here today and excited to recognize the incredible productivity of this region.
All right, a little shorter. Thank you, Ryan. This time, I'd like to kind of address the dogs in the room, so this year's report features our two new agricultural detector canine teams and they're very capable handlers, so I'd like to invite them to come up here with me. First, we have Brody, who is our black lab. He joined the department in April of 2022 when he was paired with his handler, Caitlin Demont. Brody is a two-year-old black lab that loves to swim, as well as chase cats and birds and anything he sees while on his walks. Reportedly, he is not a picky eater and he will eat anything, but he really gets excited about his Kong filled with peanut butter. Our second team is Rufus. He was paired with his handler, Amanda Clark, in September of 2022. Rufus is a two-year-old German Shepherd mix that loves to play fetch and go for long walks. His favorite food is doggy beef jerky and he loves to chew on antlers. Any of you hunters out there, guard your prize. Both our teams are an integral component of the pest prevention system in California that protects the, that prevents the introduction of harmful pests and invasive species. A typical day for these teams starts around 6:00 AM at the UPS terminal where they're going in and out of trucks looking for parcels that contain agricultural products, plant material that may be bringing in pests from other parts of the country and even around the world. From there, they will head over to our other parcel facilities and have a fairly long day working in a variety of elements and finally, they'll come back to the office and do their paperwork and then, you know, they get to have a little fun time together and play in the office. And, you know, everybody loves to see the dogs in the office and they definitely are everyone's favorite coworkers. So I just want to recognize the work that these two do. It's a difficult schedule. Sometimes it's changing and they probably start well before 6:00 to make sure that their four-legged partners are taken care of and, you know, and ready to start their day. So I'm going to thank a few more staff and recognize them for the countless hours that they put into producing this report. Angel Gibson and Amanda Zito, and Angel's actually here today and standing in the back and if she wants, she can come forward. And this report would not be possible without their hard work. Gina Barhill, of course, with the County of Fresno Internal Services and Graphic Department, did our beautiful graphic design again this year. And lastly, we need to thank the producers in Fresno County. This is our yearly opportunity to recognize the growers, shippers, ranchers, workers, and other businesses instrumental to and supportive of agriculture in Fresno County. We would not be able to produce this report without their input and cooperation. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Comments from the board?
What month was it that you sent us that deal to fill out?
Which, which deal?
The one that you actually have to put the...
Oh, for the crop report?
Right.
That, I think, goes out and we start mailing those out in January.
January, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I got something in the mail from Kings County because we've got some ground in Kings County, and it's like, why am I getting this now? This is for the 22 crop year.
It is, it is almost a 12-year process now to produce the crop report for Fresno County. We start mailing out, we actually start pre, you know, getting together the mail out in probably November or so. That mail out goes in and out in January. The staff are inputting the data that we get back and then they have to determine if we got enough data back for certain crops to make a responsible estimate there of the value. And, and then, you know, kind of in the last month, it's all of the hurrying up to get it produced. And so here we are in August and they'll get a couple weeks off before they start putting that mailer together in November again to go out.
Oh, you want your renewal for your pesticide permit? You need to fill this out. No, it's good. I like that.
It really is important that we have, you know, I mean, whenever you're the government, you send out a mailer and say, please give us your information of what you made for the year on your commodities. It's, you know, understandably, there's folks out there that are hesitant to fill those out. All the information is confidential. We only place values in the, in the report that there are multiple sources for that information so that it doesn't, you know, if we only had one grower of a commodity, then they would be put into miscellaneous, you know, and that sort of thing. And then also, you know, we can't produce this report without, without the data. And so it's, it's important that we maintain that trust with our growers so that they're, they're willing to share the data with us.
Well, I filled it out, but I trust you.
And then Ms. Cregan, I see we had a new entry this year and mandarins at number 10, they were 11, so number nine dropped out. What was that?
Number nine was oranges.
Oh, oranges.
Yeah, they kind of shuffled.
They say it's like cousins, yeah, so they just switched, yeah.
I mean, it's, every year, we have a certain number of commodities that go up a little bit, certain that go down. You know, there's, there's a lot of competition kind of in that eight, nine, 10 spots, so those tend to rotate based on the year.
Okay, thank you.
Steve? Thank you. This was an informational item only and the numbers are looking great, so thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Next.
There is, counsel will correct me if I'm incorrect. Supervisor Mendez wishes to reopen item 34 for further discussion. So we would need a motion and second to reopen item 34.
So to reopen item 34, do we have a motion to reopen?
I think there was a little confusion because we didn't actually, in that motion, we're not saying, hey, we're going to go out and get another vendor. We just killed, killed the deal.
All right.
Okay.
We'll get a motion.
Do I have a motion to reopen?
I'll make the motion to reopen.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reopen item number 34 for further discussion.
I just have a suggestion. We can go back to where we were before and clarify that, but we could do this for just one year and that would give us that window for him to actually get where we'd have time to bring in another vendor. I'm just saying that.
Any other discussion on the item?
To reopen, right?
We, we did. We had Supervisor Mendez and Maxic.
All in favor? Okay, I didn't hear that part.
Oh, you know what, Supervisor, you are accurate. I didn't hear the "all in favor."
No, you're actually right.
Okay, all in favor to reopen?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, reopens.
Okay. And that's just was my suggestion that if we stayed with that item, but just limited it to one year, not a three-year deal, that would give us a window to bring somebody else in. Because there's a good chance we're going to have to, to clarify the deal, we're going to have to go and make a deal with a new vendor and that'll put us so close to the election that we probably won't make it. It'll be pretty sloppy what we do. I don't know. I think, I don't know, James, I seen him walk back in.
Thank you, Supervisor. So I was withholding a little bit because I didn't want to appear to be holding their short. Our first mailing for the March election is less than a month away. We are doing registration activities which include mailings every two weeks. So registration maintenance, which right now the vendor has agreed to continue since this is a retroactive agreement, those will have to stop and be put on hold until we can establish a new contract and then send them out as a group. Our first mailings there are for all voters to know what party they are registered with because this is a partisan primary election and to give our NPP voters the opportunity to choose, excuse me, which crossover ballot they would like to do. So it's a fairly important mailing that we'll be doing here at the end of October.
Is that mailing required by law or can we just skip it?
It is required by law. All of the ones I've just mentioned there are required by law. We will have to do. For the registration maintenance ones, we have to hold. I do have to mail them every month, so even if I don't have a contract, I will have to do a purchase order for a temporary mailing service.
Okay. So anyway, that's just all I'm saying is that, you know, if we limited it to a year but actually opened it back up in December, you'd have to start in December to work with a possible new vendor.
Right. And I understand that I'm here late in the process. We started this RFP in the spring, in the late winter, and we were in negotiations with this vendor and actually strengthening our cybersecurity and other requirements, our cybersecurity insurance and other cyber issues throughout an extended period. And so we brought this vendor up to a level that is now expected of all county contracts. That's what delayed us and I apologize that we're here for that, but felt it was very important that we implement those changes to strengthen our security systems.
Well, James, for, for me personally, I, I understand that. And again, I stated earlier, I believe they can get the job done, but the final vote's here with the five members of us. And I know, and I'm going to just go on the record right now, the department heads over the last 30 to 60 days, I understand some of their feathers have been ruffled by some of the things maybe we've questioned here at the board at our last meeting, what Supervisor Brandau and I have gone in for a meeting. I can appreciate that, but sometimes we take things for granted here and we need to get these votes to us in a timely manner because we ultimately have the final say. And so I think this goes out to all department heads. We need to get our stuff in on time. We've tried to convey that in a polite and professional manner, but no matter when you do that, somebody's feelings are hurt and there was not intended, but things happen and we're all elected to do a job. The department heads are hired to do a job. It's unfortunate we're late, but it is what it is. I can understand the concern. I think Supervisor Mendez has provided an alternative, but for me personally, I'm going to stand by my original vote. This company has a spotty practice. While it may not be the one we're dealing with, it's them on a national level. We have heard from our constituents. Again, for me, this is an attempt to try and meet the needs, to ensure the people that we do have a fair and accurate election. I believe they can get the job done, but sometimes it doesn't hurt to shake things up, just like in audits. We don't keep the same audit firm every year. We've been with this firm a long time and maybe it's the time to do it. So unfortunately, we're up against a window, but we just got to deal with what we have because as another member of the public said, we're in private business, a lot of us, and we don't always get to pick what we do and we're forced to deal with situations and this may be one of those times. So if, again, if my colleagues want to redo and revote, I am accepting of that, but I will not change my position on this vote and I appreciate what you said, but I think this is a good example for all department heads. Bring your stuff in. We shouldn't be having very many retroactive items coming forward. I know when I was first elected with Supervisor Mendez, we made a big deal about that. I must have gotten a little softer over the years and don't complain about it as much and this is what happens when we don't hold people accountable. So I appreciate your position, but I will not change my vote on this item. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
So Supervisor Mendez, then, do we have a motion or just comment?
Well, I'll make a motion. We just do it to December, just to get this process done, but then we've got to restart December of...
24.
24.
Okay. With that, county council, do we have to rescind the original vote and then vote again?
I don't think it's necessary that you rescind the original vote. You voted down the contract that was presented to you. I think if the board wishes to authorize the registrar of voters to enter into this contract for only one year, he's going to need to go back and see if the vendor is willing to do that. You can give him that authorization on the same terms and, and conditions, you know, for a contract through December of 2024 and he'll need to, you know, do that retroactively, bringing back the new agreement because you don't have that agreement in front of you right now.
So then we... So then we have a motion, a new motion on the floor, right?
So I need a second. It would be to authorize the, uh, entering into a contract on the same terms and conditions, but only...
Yeah, it's only a one-year instead of a three. It's really not that complicated.
We just changed it to December.
Supervisor Mendez made a motion for a one-year and, and not a three-year.
Right. Because technically we have nothing at this time. Zero.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion, but I recognize we need to hear from the public too, since this now is a, an item that we're voting on.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, comments from the public?
And I recognize a change that we need to make.
Right.
Good morning, Board. Uh, no introduction either. Again, um, I'm gonna say I, I definitely, um, uh, in favor Supervisor Mendez's recommendation for the one-year renewal. I am concerned in regards to, um, voting information getting out in a timely manner, uh, so it does not disrupt the voting process. I'm a opponent, uh, proponent of mail, you know, vote by mail. And just, I just want that out there, that vote by mail is not a bad thing. I've been down to the elections office and kind of seen the process myself. I'm not involved with the backend things, but seeing how the vote by mail process works. Um, I have not seen any issues with it. I do understand concerns from, uh, constituents. However, I just hope that this is not just a, uh, a basis attack on voting by mail in general. Thank you. And lastly, if the vendor does not approve for a one-year contract, I'd like to know what is gonna be the board or the department's decision on how to go forward to ensure that there's no interruption to the voting process.
Thank you, uh, just, uh, for the opportunity to speak on this matter again, and thank you for the, your, uh, position on this topic earlier. Um, you know, the, the, the reputation of the company really, I think, i- is very, very questionable because we're, we're talking about the fact that they shared the same address, the same everything with the, the company that you had to exit your agreement with and move over to effectively the same company, just under a different name. It was the same company, the same one that was barred. It's all the same issues. It, so we, we can point to the thing in Colorado that happened that's representative of that company at large, but we're also talking about, again, this is the same company that was barred because, for, for, and it had a $270,000 lien. Um, you, it, I, if, if we wanna talk about the vote by mail system as, as a whole, you're not gonna find anybody in the county that spent more time investigating this that doesn't already work for the office. I have massive concerns. And he, the, our register, Mr. Coos here, I mean, he knows how much time I've spent on, on all of this. I've been to al- almost all of our vote centers. I've spent countless hours down at the warehouse. You can check how many times I've gone to sign in, how many hours I've spent outside in my own private life investigating all this stuff. I know that's not what we're voting on at this time. Um, when it comes to this particular vendor though, I really do strongly urge the board to really investigate what the alternatives are, look for other options and, and just really, really consider a contract with this one. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Brent Berdine. And again, I would really want the ca- council to consider what we're, what you're talking about and go back to your original decision. What we're dealing here ultimately is, is confidence among the public and, and our voting system and the procedures. And we all know that that's in question right now. Now, I come before you, I don't have a political axe to grind. I see all of us in the same boat. We're all out in the ocean. Our boat has a leak in it and we don't have any oars. So between all of us working together, we have to plug that leak, bail water and row to make the system work. And I too have been an observer down at the warehouse. I've been to many voting centers. I, I do over 30 during the election cycle, rural areas, all over the county. And I will tell you that following the procedure, Mr. Coos does an excellent job. There are a lot of great county employees doing excellent work. And I don't have any criticism of that. My criticism is of the procedures and protocols that we have to work with, not of the people in, in dealing with it. And part of that is working with the, the, the protocols and procedures of, of the companies. This company has a, a damaged reputation. There are, are the concerns we have regarding the mailing system. We have concerns regarding, uh, the signature verification, the reconciliation. We all have to balance budgets. We, we have to be able to balance all the ballots that are made. Who's making them? Where are they going out to? How many's been received? How many's been voted and been accounted for? This company doesn't have a good reputation for that. We've never received an adequate reconciliation amount of the votes, I mean ballots, which, which is what they are, votes, that have been created and, and sent out and accounted for. So again, thank you for your consideration. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tammy Richardson and I stand by the words that I spoke earlier that we just really, uh, to ensure trust in the voting system, that we really need to vet who we use and sign contracts with. Um, also, I think James does a great job and we've, I've had meetings with James and I think he does the best of his ability and, and I know a lot of times his hands are tied and, and, you know, that's a state issue. But, um, I also am a little concerned that, and I know it was addressed, that it came to the board today and, and we're already using them and we're at a timeline where you have to do an extension for a year. Because this brings me back to, I think it was 2019 when we went into the Voters' Choice Act and you were under the gun for a quick, was it 18? I, I can't remember exactly, but I, I've watched that several times and how, uh, you all voted on the Voters' Choice Act. But you were under a timeline and even some of you had stated, if we weren't under this timeline, we would vote differently. And so I feel like here we are again, under a timeline, and now you're having to work around those limitations. So I just urge you to, uh, to follow what the constituents of Fresno County need to have, uh, trust in our elections. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments from the public. With that, uh...
Chairman.
So I wanted to, um, kinda clarify my position because it, it's a little bit slightly different from some of my colleagues who are voting the same way that I'm voting. So, and I, and you, and you guys might need to know this too, when you make your decision, cast your vote. So my problem's much more philosophical than the technical aspects that James has been talking about and Buddy's trying to address. And so I appreciate that. But, see, here's a problem. We all intuitively know that we are getting it wrong and government comes out to reassure us and it's absolutely not reassuring at all. I've got a philosophical problem with this and, and it doesn't matter what political party you're on. Presidential election happens and everybody realizes they don't trust the system. We've got to honor each other, even across the aisle, and say, you know, we kind of all know that we're getting it wrong. Let's just fix it. Now, we have a, a lot of problems going on in our country right now. And until we get voting solidified in the minds of the, of the people, and, and James, by the way, I'm not talking about you because I, these people, um, disagree with voting, but they trust you. And I'm in a good spot there too. And I'm not talking about Fresno County, but we've got a major problem in our nation that has to do with the mistrust on these issues, right? And then something happens like today on a very local level for just one contract and it kinda comes out, you know, that's, that, uh, something's broken with our system. Personally, I, I feel, and I know we're in an age of technology and somehow this could be done and should be done, but there needs to be an individual ID attached to each vote that is cast. And no matter what the system, it needs to be, um, verifiable. And so we just don't have that. And so for me, I'm a little bit different than Supervisor Pacheco's no vote, um, but I'm not gonna be able to change my position today for that philosophical reason.
Okay. Okay, uh, can we, all right, can we restate the motion and, uh, and then vote?
I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
I think what the board is attempting to do is to authorize the county clerk, registrar of voters to enter into a contract with IVS on the, for a, a little bit longer than a one-year period through December 31st of 2024, on the same terms that are presented on the RFP proportionate to that one-year contract. Uh, the registrar, uh, with that authorization will need to enter, see if he can enter into that contract with IVS. And then I would recommend that he bring it back for ratification, uh, by the board to tie everything up.
I understood Supervisor Mendez's motion a little bit more clear than yours. So, sorry about that.
[laughing]
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I heard the no vote from Supervisor Pacheco and Brandal. And Quintero. So the motion failed.
Come back in two weeks, right?
The clerk, uh, registrar has certain legal requirements to get, uh, mailers out. He's going to have to find vendors to do that on a basis that he can do without this size of a contract. I have every confidence that he will do whatever he needs to do to make sure the legal, uh, grounds are met. Uh, I don't know what that's going to do to his budgetary concerns or the logistics of what he's doing. He, he has, uh, authority as a department head to do that. There's some things under the, uh, elections code that may indicate some independent authority as well, but we haven't analyzed those all the way through yet.
How much spending authority do you have, independent of this board? I think zero or maybe?
Well, again, I've never asked county council for an opinion on this, but there is some election codes that say specifically that I am empowered to do what is necessary to deliver ballots to the voters of this county irrespective of your vote, but through county, uh, base purchasing procedures. I still need to work with purchasing to, to have all the paperwork done on that. Uh, there's another area as well. I don't know if it's the CVIG, County Voter Information Guide, but there's, uh, two specific areas, vote, uh, voting materials and one other item that I am empowered to make sure happen.
He'll have to basically go as, kind of pay as you go.
As long as he can do that within the purchasing agent, uh, requirement. Like, as I said, he has not asked us for the opinion on these election codes, uh, sections. They, um, we haven't utilized those here in this county because normally the, uh, board has worked with the registrar and making sure he can perform his duties.
No, I'm just asking mechanics, you know, be, I'm all about mechanics.
It's essentially pay as you go right now, as far as we can tell.
Okay.
County Counsel, I'm sure you're more than capable of getting him through the process and he has to do his job, you do yours, and we just did ours. So whatever it takes, get it done, James. Yeah. So, we're good.
So we now, that concludes that item. So we now move to item 12, under Human Resources, approve a five-step salary range system for classifications currently designated as senior management and department heads with salary resolution effective October 16, 2023.
Okay, Ms. McGill.
Good morning, Chairman Quintero, members of the board. Hollis McGill, Director of Human Resources. We appreciate the opportunity to present this item to you today. This is an update to the county's senior management compensation plan. Human Resources, in conjunction with the CAO, formed a committee of several department heads, uh, Sonia Bougue, Robert Bash, Susan Holt, Steve White, Chief Haynes, and Sheriff Zanoni, to specifically address senior management and advise on this plan. To provide context, senior management compensation plan has remained unchanged since 2002, so over 20 years. Senior management employees have been traditionally placed at a flat rate salary upon hire and received only cost of living adjustments. We do not currently provide any experience or performance-based adjustments for staff after they've been hired. And for newly hired staff, they are placed at the same rate as experienced staff. And due to the difficulties of hiring and retaining SMG employees, we developed this recommended solution. Our solution is to transition senior management classifications to the county's standard 5% salary range system. The strategic move is in line with the county's compensation system for all other classifications and it promotes equity and fair treatment of incumbents. First, it enhances internal equity within the county, ensuring that compensation and experience and performance, promoting fairness and transparency. Second, it makes the county more competitive in the local labor market, helping us retain and, retain and attract top talent. Third, and probably most important, it incentivizes performance management, holding staff and their supervisors accountable, and motivating employees to excel their roles and provide excellent public service to our diverse community. Last, it rewards experience, recognizing the value of tenure, and encouraging employee loyalty. For the standard step conversion methodology, we took the current rate of pay and placed the classification at the closest range step three. And I would like to point out that originally it was not HR's recommendation to do this, but it was at Supervisor Pacheco, at your recommendation, to give an additional 5% to our SMG employees. And we are deeply grateful. So thank you. Thank you so much for that. Now, the average then, uh, placement would be about a 3% increase. So for example, in this conversion process, we took the senior analyst classification. It's currently paid at $88,660. So we converted it, placed it on step three of the newly created salary ranges. This ensures staff were either placed at or a little bit above their current salary. Then the incumbents will advance for step four and step five. And then future hires will result in placements step one through step five. Now, while most of the classifications had a straight conversion, some classifications included a 5% internal and external equity adjustments. The internal equity adjustments were provided to the outliers, the identified outliers, and the incumbents were placed on the appropriate range within a 5% equity. The market equity adjustments were identified through recently completed salary surveys and step five was set, uh, set at the county's gold standard for the surrounding five counties. Incumbents were placed on the appropriate range within that 5% equity adjustment. Now, in conclusion, by implementing this historic step system for SMG, the county is poised to address longstanding challenges such as vacancies, attrition, and hard-to-fill classifications within its workforce. We believe that the proposed changes are a pivotal step forward in enhancing our workforce and ensuring the county's continued success. Human Resources will continue to look at salaries as part of our ongoing efforts to be competitive in the labor market. And I'd like to thank the staff and the committee who helped make this a reality. But I wanna take a moment and I would like to recognize Jill Bark, because this really was her, um, kind of her brainchild. So, thank you Jill, Shereya and the S, you know, and the rest of ESD to do the appendix, which was, you know, quite a chore. So thank you and Labor. Um, so it really was a team effort. Um, so also, thank you to the board for your consideration and your investment in our workforce and in turn, the county of Fresno. Your board's approval of these recommendations will empower Human Resources to proceed with this monumental initiative. And Paul, I don't know if you'd like to say something?
Chairman, members of the board, Paul Nerland, your CAO. Um, I just wanna publicly thank the department heads, but in particular, the, the committee that met on this. This, this, if there's anything in this process that we've learned was getting, uh, not just all department heads to, to agree, but also to give honest feedback. And, and I'll say there was many, many discussions with this group. Um, I will tell you as your CAO that there were times as I met with department heads that it went beyond concern, but sometimes desperation in them trying to recruit and retain employees. it went beyond concern, but sometimes desperation in them trying to recruit and retain employees in some of their areas. This is something that even back to my time in Human Resources, we've wanted to address, and I'm strongly recommending your approval of this action. I want to also thank Human Resources and the team. They put so many hours into this effort, but strongly encourage your approval and support of this item. I can answer any questions that you may have.
I'm done.
So again, with the proposed adjustments that you're making, you believe that it will help Fresno County to be more competitive when it comes to attracting and retaining senior managers?
Absolutely.
Okay. And there were studies, of course, that you performed that compared us to our surrounding counties mainly, and you believe the work that's been done in these proposals will put us kind of at the top of at the top end because we are the largest county. Is that correct?
It's a start, but yes, I think we've done a very good job on getting there.
Thank you.
No comments? Okay. Do we have any comments from the public?
Wouldn't be me if I didn't say anything, right? Sorry. Anyway, I once again stand before you to acknowledge this investment being made on behalf of administrators. I do believe that this move is long overdue and will allow for greater accountability for all aspects of management's duties. Having this salaries move from a band to merit step system will allow individual managers, directors, and department heads to be evaluated not only for the work that they do, but also for how they are viewed by their subordinates. It is high time that employee morale and workplace atmosphere be at the forefront of evaluations for management, as this is a crucial area in which we can make or break an employee's desire to remain with the county. Thus, as you consider this much-needed change, I would further ask that evaluations be mandatory and allow input via survey or some other tool to gauge how employees view their managers prior to any merit-based step increase. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Sheriff John Zanoni. I was part of the senior management compensation committee. I want to thank CAO Paul Nerland for putting this together, along with Hollis McGill from County Human Resources. This is something that is needed. I believe it is long overdue. As Hollis said a minute ago, it's a start, a step in the right direction to make us competitive with our neighbors. I've done my research. I know where we stand. I believe her numbers are very good, and I really appreciate the work that they've done on this. And this is something that is a commitment to the residents of Fresno County for the service that we provide. You know, it's not just the department heads, whether you're appointed or elected. Those directors, those assistant department heads, in my case, the undersheriff, those are the ones that make these county departments run. They're the ones that get the work done. They're the ones that deserve the senior management compensation plan. They deserve a five-step salary system, so they know how their performance is going to lead to them increasing and moving up the steps. I strongly encourage that you approve this. This measure, along with the other board item that increased the amount that's contributed to employees' health insurance, along with this, goes a long way and shows your commitment to the employees of Fresno County and the service and the work that they provide our residents day in and day out. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none? I'll accept the comments from the board. None from the board? I will entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second. To approve this item, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number thirteen.
We move to item number thirteen. Under Internal Services, make a finding that it is in the best interest of the county to suspend the competitive bidding process consistent with Amendment Policy Number Thirty-four for unusual or extraordinary circumstances, as ECIVS is the only available grant management platform to offer a curated database that is updated in near real time.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. My name is Eric Matthews. I am the Deputy Director over Information Technology. The item before you today is a recommended agreement with ECIVS, Inc. for grant management software and support services with a three-plus-one-plus-one term and a total compensation of six hundred thousand dollars. ECIVS is designed to streamline and centralize grant activities by providing unified location to search, track, and administer grant funding. This board agenda item is being brought to you in regular session due to the agreement not following the county's standard language for termination without cause. The agreement to remove the termination without cause section was to keep the more favorable net forty-five payments. ISD has determined that the likelihood of not continuing with this software is low. I'm available for any questions you may have on this item.
Okay.
No IRS lanes, are there?
No.
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, any comments from the public? With that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve this item. We have a motion in a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item fourteen.
We now move to item number fourteen. Under Internal Services, acknowledge receipt, open and consider all sealed written bids, call for oral bids, consider all bids received, and accept the highest bid for the sale of approximately thirty acres with improvements of county-owned surplus real property located at the northeast corner of East Kings Canyon Road and South Cedar Avenue, Fresno, California, commonly known as the old University Medical Center campus.
Mr. Jones.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. Christopher Jones, Principal Staff Analyst with the Internal Services Department. We are returning to your board again with the public auction. It is a part of the surplus property process for the University Medical Center campus. This is a roughly thirty-acre property located at the corner of Kings Canyon Road and Cedar Avenue. Property includes approximately twenty buildings totaling approximately six hundred and twenty thousand square feet of building space. It includes the former hospital and a wide variety of other outbuilding. The minimum price set by your board on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three was six million dollars. During the governmental entity offer period required by the Surplus Land Act, we received no offers from qualifying entities. As a reminder, the board can reject any offer that it deems not acceptable for any reason, even if it exceeds the minimum price already set. At this point, we would like to move through the bidding process and then answer any questions that the board may have prior to the acceptance or rejection of any qualifying bids.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I did notice a few members of the audience pull out their checkbooks and see what their balance was. So I think we'll have something from the audience. Okay, any comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, any comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I have one bid.
That's very well sealed.
Yes.
And the bid is?
We do have a cashier's check for fifty thousand, and the offer is six million dollars. And I'm going to need some help with this name. I'm not sure how to say it.
Can you speak a little bit louder, please?
We have received a cashier's check, and we've received the offer of six million from?
Savak Kachidorian. So we have received a single bid that does indeed meet our minimum requirements. Do we have anybody present in the audience who has not submitted a sealed bid who would like to issue an oral bid? I will take that as a no, and as we only have a single bidder, I do not think that we need to go through the auction process. I think that concludes the auction and.
Counsel, yeah, bring us on now.
If the board wishes to accept the bid, they should and vote to accept the bid and direct the other actions in the recommended action to consummate the deal.
Mr. Maxig, yeah, that's your area of expertise.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Kachidorian. You are the proud owner of thirty-four acres, thirty-two.
We now move to item number fifteen. Under the Board of Supervisors, committee reports and comments.
Okay. Are there any committee reports or board comments at this time? None?
I would, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I would request the chair to form an ad hoc committee consisting of myself and Supervisor Mendez to work with the Fresno City Council regarding our tax share agreement. When I was chairman, the first time, we had an ad hoc committee with the Mayor Lee Brand. We got a lot of good things done. It's been over three years since we've been at an impasse, and I believe it's time representatives of this board meet with members of the city council to try and get that going again for the betterment of all the citizens of Fresno County. I would ask your discretion with that. Right, County Council?
We're good. Okay. We don't need a motion or anything.
The chair has the ability, would you?
Thank you for bringing that forward. Overdue. Thank you.
I've got a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, as well. Whenever it's my turn.
Supervisor Maxig?
So last week, we had the opening of the fair, and our very own chairman kind of operated as the master of ceremonies, and I thought he did a good job, so I appreciate you, Sal, stepping in and performing that duty. Also, last week, our very own Brian Pacheco competed globally, and he accomplished something that I was telling him earlier today. I, you know, I've had the pleasure of competing in different sports and racing, and I've always been average at pretty much everything I do my whole life. But our very own supervisor is a world champion, and not only in one category, but I believe in three, which has only been done or maybe never has been done before. And so Brian Pacheco not only is a dairymen, but when it comes to Brown Swiss, he is a world champion, and we happen to have him on this board. So congratulations, you have done well.
Thank you, Maxig. Appreciate that, yeah.
Can you expand on that a little bit?
I'll just briefly say it's been a long meeting, but last week was the World Dairy Exposition in Madison, Wisconsin, where the best of every state in the union compete, and we had good fortune with Lady Luck. We won two classes with our cows from Kerman that won their class and went on to be the grand and reserve champion of the Brown Swiss breed. And the uniqueness of it, it was the first mother-daughter combo in the fifty-six history, fifty-six-year history of the World Dairy Exposition that a mother-daughter have ever won grand and reserve of any breed. And that was a very, very proud moment for me, and I appreciate you bringing that up, Supervisor Maxig, yeah.
And it's a first in California?
Yeah, I'm probably the second in California to ever get the grand champion of the World Dairy Expo for that breed.
That deserves another hand. Hey, are there any other committee reports or board comments? Seeing none?
We now move to item number sixteen, board appointments.
Any board members that would like to make appointments? Supervisor Mendez?
For Salma Cemetery District, appoint Jennifer Earl to the position previously held by Bob Allen.
Supervisor Maxig? None?
And I have three, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Brandal.
Thank you. To the Assessment Appeals Board, I would like to name Teddy Torian to the vacant District Two seat, and then to the Emergency Medical Care Committee, Greg Garner to the Fresno and Madera Police Chiefs Association representative seat, and then finally, for Historical Landmarks and Records Advisory Commission, William Bertolani, Jr. to the vacant District Two seat.
Are there any comments from the public regarding the appointments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the appointments. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventeen.
We now move to item number seventeen, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board on any matter not on the agenda? Please form a line behind the podium. You are limited to three minutes per person and no more than fifteen minutes per total topic. And Clerk, if you'll keep time on that, please. Thank you.
I will.
Hello, my name is Brent Berdine, and on my behalf and the other two ladies that were with me today, we want to thank you for your consideration and for sharing your thoughts and your decisions today regarding item thirty-four. We think that the decision you made goes makes a makes a big step toward helping voter confidence. Also, it's it looks good. I think it's great for Fresno County to taking a stand when it comes to the level of professionalism and the standards that Fresno County will accept and from other companies working on this issue. So I think it made the county look good as well. And as far as the issues now of what Mr. Kous is under a lot of pressure, I'm familiar with his staff, his managers, and Mr. Kous has excellent organizational skills, and I'm very confident that he'll make sure that everything will be done legally, the ballots will be out on time, and everything will be of everybody's satisfaction. So I have complete confidence in the voters, the county clerk on that. So thank you very much.
Sean Berdine, I'd like to also say thank you for taking that item under such consideration. I know it places the county and the office under a lot of very difficult position, but I also really want to thank the board on a larger scale. You know, I've been coming here for I don't know how long now regularly. I'm not good with time that way. But overall, I really feel like the board has been making a lot of really good steps that makes me very even more confident in the board than I already was on taking on some of these more controversial issues, taking stronger stances, listening to constituents on controversial issues. So thank you very much for that. And I'd also like to state for the record, and I wish I said it earlier, I have never had any issue with Mr. Kous, any of his staff. It's always been very professional. My concerns on the topic earlier were strictly in regards to policy, procedure, and law and all of that, and the status of that particular organization. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Olga Valle, and although I am also part of SCIU today, I come and speak as an independent, but with things that have to do that that also affect SCIU and everybody else. This is a I've noticed over time, at least three times, we didn't know where we were at in the agendas, and I also have attended other meetings in other places for the county. I attended MERCET, and they have their agendas, and not only in Spanish, also, they also have them in other languages. I am requesting, today I'm requesting, that the agendas be made in Spanish or, you know, so that it could to address the accommodations for us to to be able to follow the agenda. I also, upon myself, I self-appoint myself to educate other people on how the agendas work so that we can follow them, because by the time you get to the public speaking, sometimes we're not ready and we're not, we don't know, and I feel like a kindergarten having to be led to to be a speaker, because I had said I was going to be a speaker, but I'm not sure where I'm at. So as an independent, we only be, and I do this as an independent person, because I haven't spoke with SCIU about it, and they haven't approved, you know, for this to be a topic. I encourage you, it's I only brought one one agenda, if you would like to see how MERCET does it.
Give it to the clerk.
And there's other places that we have been able to get the agendas in Spanish or other languages so that the, you know, because your residents of your counties or your area also, you know, a great portion of them are Hispanic, and some only speak, only read and write in Spanish or speak Spanish. So I encourage you. I also want to say thank you for all your work you do. Thank you, Brian Pacheco. We have, thank you for coming out to the event on Saturday for the park. And so, and those of you also, I know that you do great things and you bear great responsibility. And I speak to Brian mostly because he's my representative for my. And I speak to Brian mostly because he's my representative for my district, but I also see Nathan, and Steve, and Sal, and Buddy, the things that you are doing, not only on TV, but also in other venues. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, I'm here to talk on behalf of IHSS. I would like you guys to know that that's a very serious employment. We deal with people that are terminal ill, we deal with people that's having all different types of problems, and not only do we have to be a worker for them, we have to be their social worker, we have to be their mothers when it comes to children, we have to be their parents when it comes to adults that don't understand why they're going through dementia. So, we would like, I was just wanting to ask if y'all consider doing an increase on our wages, because gas is six dollars an hour, and it takes a lot of gas to go back and forth every day to our clients. So, I'm just asking and pleading that you guys take into consideration that in-home is a very serious, is just as serious as any other employment, and it's not to be looked at, it's, we're just doing this for the money. No, because a lot of people won't even do in-home. A lot of people say it's too stressful, it's too emotionally drained. So, the ones that do do it, I think they should be entitled to a little raise. Thank you.
My name is Angelina, and I am also an in-home supportive services provider. I've been in, for eighteen, nine years, and every year, it seems like it gets harder, especially with your recipients, which they cannot do anything for themselves and provide for themselves. You know, they can't drive or anything like that, so, and it is hard. The jobs that we do is very difficult, and it's like any other job out there. We are care providers, where it's just like, in, I would say, secondhand of being a nurse, and we care for our recipients, you know, like if they were family. They become family of ours, and we care for them as much as, you know, they care for ours, us, for being there to help them and provide for them. And since we don't get paid enough for that, it's like, it's not the money that we need, it's just how we get to and from our, you know, our recipients, that they need the help that we're trying to provide for them, and without that, we won't be able to reach our recipient's home, you know, taking them to doctor's appointments and other, you know, situations that they need to be provided, you know, for, and, you know, to. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, the cost of living is getting up there, and we cannot afford that, so we, you know, in consideration of, you know, of higher than our wages, it's not that we, we, how do I say it? It's not that we don't want that, it's just that we are, we work hard for what we deserve, and that's what we're here for, is because we deserve what we are working for and what we are jobs, you know, for, so.
My name is Cheryl, and I live, I reside in District Three, and I am a seventy-two-year-old woman. I have no family in Fresno. I have a critical and chronic anxiety disorder diagnosed as PTSD, which as a note, is a direct result of domestic violence. As a recipient, I receive care that allows me to stay in my home with dignity and autonomy. What are the Board of Supervisors going to take care that the IHSS program will stay intact and economically competitive? At this moment, many of our providers are leaving the program and taking higher-paying jobs like working at McDonald's. Clearly, that is not a healthy sign for our IHSS program. I will close with an existential question. What would happen to me, to me, if I lose my provider? I implore the Board of Supervisors to make an equitable investment in livable wages and benefits, because livable wages and investing in livable wages and benefits, because long-term care, investing in long-term care is investing in Fresno. Thank you very much for your time, gentlemen. Good day.
Buenos dias para todos y cada uno de ustedes.
Good day for everyone, for each one of you.
Mi nombre es Ofelia Ochoa.
My name is Ofelia Ochoa.
Y soy una proveedora de cuidado en casa.
I'm a provider of in-home care.
El dia de hoy vengo agradecer.
Today, I come and I give thanks.
A mi supervisor, Brian Pacheco.
My supervisor, Brian Pacheco.
Por todo su tiempo.
For all of his time.
Y por habernos acompañado en la inauguración.
And for accompanying us in our inauguration.
Que tuvimos en el parque, en Mendota.
In Mendota.
Por su gran trabajo para poder llevar a cabo este proyecto.
To take this project.
Y llevar a cabo este sueño para nuestros niños con necesidades especiales en la comunidad de Mendota y a sus alrededores.
And to take this dream.
Este proyecto llevó más de dos años para poder llevar a cabo, y por fin, gracias a Dios, tuvimos la inauguración.
And thank goodness we have an inauguration.
Le agradezco mucho, supervisor, por todo su apoyo, por todos los fondos que lleva nuestra comunidad, por todo su trabajo, les agradezco mucho.
I appreciate it.
Pero seguimos en la lucha, este, en nuestro programa de IHSS.
But we're in the fight.
Ahorita no hay nada en la mesa todavía.
There's still nothing on the table.
Pues la vida es muy cara.
Life is hard.
Necesitamos un aumento de salario.
We need an increase in wages.
Y pedimos de su apoyo.
And we're asking for your support.
Para poder sobresalir adelante con nuestra familia, que lo necesita.
To move ahead, to good our families who need it.
Y pues quiero agradecer, y estoy de acuerdo con Olga, si se puede hacer la agenda en español, les agradecería mucho.
If you can make the agenda in Spanish, it would be greatly appreciated.
Mucha, pues gracias mucho.
Thank you.
Orgullo tengo yo de mi supervisor, Brian Pacheco, y de todos ustedes.
Brian Pacheco and all of you.
Que Dios los bendiga a todos.
God bless you all.
Gracias.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Apollonia Valencia.
My name is Apollonia.
Yo estoy cuidando a mi esposo desde hace ocho años.
I take care of my husband for eight years.
Y he estado aquí con ustedes. Tal vez ya no se enfade, porque soy muy agredoso, agredoso. Pero estoy tan mortificada.
But I'm so frustrated.
Extremadamente mortificada.
Very frustrated.
Porque cuatro días atrás.
Four days ago.
Alguien que necesita de cuidados en casa.
Someone that needed some help in home care.
Me habló. Me dijo, señora, por favor, busquen quién me cuide.
Ma'am, please.
Porque la persona que me cuidaba.
Because the person that took care of me.
Me va a dejar.
She's going to leave.
Porque no le están pagando bien.
Because they're not paying her enough.
Y se va a trabajar a McDonald's, porque le van a pagar veinte dólares por hora.
And McDonald's going to pay you twenty dollars an hour.
Me pone en total shock.
I'm in shock.
Porque, ¿qué va a pasar? Ahorita es uno.
What's going to happen?
Después, diez.
After, it's going to be ten.
Hasta yo misma estoy dispuesta, a que si yo estoy ganando este sueldo de diecisiete dólares por hora.
Our early rate of seventeen.
A llamar a otra persona para que cuide a mi esposo, para yo ir a trabajar, para poder cubrir los gastos de mi casa.
So, I can cover my expenses at home.
Yo quisiera que ustedes pusieran un poquito, un poquito de atención.
I would love that you guys.
Y que pusieran su mano en su corazón nuevamente.
And put your hand in your heart.
Y que pensaran que nosotros somos trabajadores esenciales.
And think.
Y que no es posible vivir con este sueldo de lo que nos tienen.
It's impossible to live with this type of wages.
Yo entiendo y sé que tenemos el dinero, el estado tiene el dinero, el fundado, para podernos dar ese aumento.
The state has the money.
Ya, ahorita en este año, ya quedamos automáticamente fuera del presupuesto.
We are out of this process.
Vamos a esperar otro año para seguir luchando.
We're going to wait another year to keep fighting.
Vamos a estar otra vez nueve años para que nos den.
We're going to be another nine years?
¿Qué está pasando con nosotros? ¿Qué está pasando con la sociedad?
What's happening to the society?
¿Por qué tener a nuestros enfermos?
Why have our?
¿Por qué pasar moción por unos animalitos que ayudan, que confortan? ¿Por qué no ayudar a una persona como mi esposo, que trabajó para la Ciudad de Clovis, por nueve años?
That worked for the city of Clovis for nine years.
Esforzándose para tener la ciudad limpia.
To keep their city clean.
Y ponerlo más abajo que un animal?
And put him, put him lower than an animal?
Yo amo a mis animales.
I love animals.
Yo amo a mis animales.
I love my animals.
Pero no más que a mi esposo.
But not more than my husband.
Por favor, necesitamos poner atención en la humanidad.
Please, put attention in the humanity.
Yo le doy muchas gracias, y muchas gracias, señor Pacheco, por este, la convivencia que yo vi que tiene con su comunidad.
For the community.
Usted no es mi, no es mi supervisor, es el señor Steve Brandon, pero también, gracias, señor Brandon.
Also give you thanks, Steve.
Hello, my name is Sean, and I've been a care provider for about a year and a half. And, okay, I understand that, okay, fast food places are going to be getting twenty dollars an hour and stuff. Okay, you pay high school kids and stuff, twenty bucks an hour to flip burgers. How about doing that for the in-home supportive service care providers, who is a much more important and much more critical jobs than other things, such as bathing the recipients, caring for them, cleaning their homes, taking them where they need to go, being there for them, supporting them, doing what you can to help them. And this isn't about what can the care providers and recipients do for themselves, it's about what can we do to stay united as one and do for each other and help each other help others? You know, thank you.
Hello, my name is Hilda Vida. The first time I actually stood here was about ten years ago, when I was retiring from Fresno County as an employee. I actually worked thirty-three years for the county. I remember getting praised that because I retired because I needed to take care of my mom that developed Alzheimer's. And so, to keep actually still engaged in my community, I decided to join SEIU. I am a delegate on the executive board. I represent fifteen hundred members under District Five, because I want them to understand what their rights are. I want them to have, better know what's going on with in-home supportive services. One of the things, when I do call my members and I tell them what's going on, I let them know that we're under a negotiation contract, because I'm on the negotiation team. I let them know that what the teams, the county team has come to propose to us, and they are in shock. They are completely in shock, because when I tell them that one of the things at the table was brought to us was that they want to eliminate our health coverage, and they are in shock. And somehow, I had one member say, what am I going to do? I'm at stage four cancer. What am I going to do without insurance? Another member, when I called to let them know, she was in the hospital. Well, I tell them, you need to call your supervisor and let them know what's going on. So, the healthcare is important. One of the other things is, I know that there is a five million dollar penalty if you do not sign the contract. A lot of times, people are going to say, well, the raise is going to be more than the five million dollar, the penalty. Well, what, I'd rather that you give us the raise, one, so we can keep the money here in the community, so we can pay for our gas, so we can pay for our milk, to give our children their food. I am very blessed, because I did retire with the county. I have a wonderful retirement, but not all our members are that blessed. So, please help them. Thank you.
My name is Sue Hammond. I have been a caregiver for sixteen years. Part of that time was in Washington State, and we bargained and we fought, because us as caregivers are very, very essential workers. We had to work during the pandemic. You know, our clients are very, very needy for our help. We want to be able to keep them in their homes. And as a caregiver, I have been a caregiver here now for my daughter's father-in-law for over a year, because his Parkinson's got really severe. And I am there Monday through Friday, six days, five days a week, six hours a day. He needs care and help. Today, I have a caregiver that filled in for me to be here. I am asking you to really consider paying us twenty dollars an hour, because we deserve that for what we do. We're not just caregivers, we're family, we're friends. We also help them stay in their homes, so they don't have to go to facilities. It would cost tons and tons, much more money to have them in a facility than allow them to be home and independent. I am asking you to really consider this, because it is very important for us to have a job to be able to go to, to provide the care, so that our clients can stay in their homes. And I just thank you for listening to us and for being there, and to pass this budget in our contract for us as caregivers. God bless you all. Thank you. I'm Sue Hammond. Also, board supervisors.
So, Mr. Chairman.
I also would like to say we are investing, if you invest in long-term care, you're investing in Fresno.
Mr. Chairman, we are at fifteen minutes for this specific topic. Just letting you know.
Well, what do we have? Three left?
Two.
Two? Fine, we'll hear the last two.
Thank you.
Then we'll close.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Helen Shannon Lopez, and I didn't come up here with SU, two fifteen. I came up here because of the lawsuit you have against the federal government about changing the name. If you knew where the name came from, maybe you wouldn't be saying it and have that name replaced. Back to Valley. The S-word. Some people have offense. One word is half-breed. I've offended, I'm offended with that word. But yet, you pay Los Angeles lawyers to go up to the federal government and fight that word to come back. What's wrong? But you can't pay them back there? You're custodians of the money. You took thirty minutes to make a budget. That's my concern. Each and every one of you need to go home and think about that, or that money that you're spending. The custo, you're a custodian of all the people that pay into it. You've got insurance, you get a paycheck. Think about us out here, that you get your money from. Remember the water?
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon to all.
Mi nombre es Ofelia Fonseca.
My name is Ofelia Fonseca.
Vengo de la ciudad de Kermit.
I come from Kermit.
Pues creo que soy la única que vengo de ahí.
I think I'm the only one from Kermit that comes.
Como que yo tengo nada más, nada más, yo tengo un hijo enfermo.
I just have one son that's ill.
Tengo treinta y ocho años cuidando.
I have thirty-eight years.
Mi hijo.
Taking care of my son.
Martín Fonseca.
Martín Fonseca.
Pues quiero, si pueden ayudar.
I want if you could.
Ayudarnos a que no suban el sueldo.
To give us an increase in our wages.
Si se puede, nos paguen un poco más.
If you can pay us some more.
Porque, pues, todo está subiendo.
Because everything is inflating. Prices are going up.
Para arriba, renta, comida.
Rent.
Comida.
Food.
Y vestido y sustento y todo.
Everything that we need to sustain.
Pues andamos luchando por nuestros hijos que cuidamos.
For our children that we take care of.
Y al rato, al rato, por nosotros.
For us.
Porque también nosotros ya andamos arrastrando la cobija también.
Because too, we are also going behind. We are also getting older.
Ya nos duele todo, todo.
Everything hurts.
Muy cansados.
We're tired.
Pues aún cuida uno.
We take care.
Sus enfermos y pues.
Of our ill ones.
Se siente uno muy cansado ya.
You feel very tired already.
Ya mi edad.
My age.
Ya es casi setenta años.
I'm almost seventy.
No es fácil.
It's not easy.
Y hasta ahorita.
Until now?
Nunca, hasta ahorita nunca, mi hijo.
Until now, my son.
Ha tenido ninguna.
Has had any?
Nunca lo he dejado que.
I've never left him or?
Que le salgan, ¿cómo se dice? Apoyas.
He's never had any type of bet or any?
Como ya has, hasta ahorita.
Until now.
Y pues, si nos pueden ayudar, un poco más.
With a little bit more help.
Y pues, muchas gracias.
And thank you.
A todo, aquí el gobierno de aquí, porque aquí, poquito que.
Our government here.
Poquito que sea, así nos han ayudado mucho.
I know the little bit that I know he's helped us some.
En México, no nos. En México no nos daban ni un lazo ni siquiera para pararnos.
They didn't give us anything, not even to park.
Y pues muchas gracias.
Well, thank you.
Que tengan muy buena tarde a todos.
May you have a great day, all of you.
Thank you all very much. And now we move on to any comments from the public wishing to address the board on closed session items, 18 to 25. Okay, seeing none. County Council seated board, will we have anything to report out or can we adjourn following closed session?
Mr. Chairman, we will need to at least hold open because we might have something to report out of closed session.
We will have something to report out of closed session? Okay. So then we will.
Recede to closed session.
Adjourn till we're done.
You'll recess to closed session and return to a time uncertain.
One second, hold on.
All set?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at a closed session, the Board by a five to nothing vote authorized the initiation of litigation for various code violations, both of the zoning code and health and safety provisions for the property at 358 South Peach Avenue in Fresno, owned and against the owners, Gamarcindo Sanchez and Shane Kelly. This action may also include a violation of California's unfair competition law under Business and Professions Code 17,200.
And that's for item number 19 on closed session?
I'm sorry, say again?
That's item 19 on closed session?
That is item, yes, initiation of litigation, which I believe was 19.
Thank you. You can entertain a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, second? On favor?
Aye.